This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. This meeting is being livestreamed in addition to taking place in person. Madam Clerk, please call it off.
Commissioner Cooper?
Here.
Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Luciano?
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Here.
Commissioner Siebel?
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Here. Would everyone please stand for the salute to the flag. I might want to ask Commissioner Luciano to lead us in the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who have perished around the world, especially here in Essex County due to COVID. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Um, Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
In that case, let's move to the public comment session. Tonight's meeting is combined conference slash very meeting, and we will move on to every item on the agenda. So if there are any members on the public who would like to comment on agenda items, only please come to the microphone, state your name and affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. There will be time later in the evening for publishing a comment on any other items. So I ask you, please limit your comments at this time to agenda item only.
I'm David Weiner. Sure, this doesn't come off my tongue, does it? Okay. Where's the thing on the change? Oh, there, cool. Thanks. Uh, I'm David Weiner, president of Local 1081, representing the non-supervisory employees of Essex County Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, K divisional Welfare. Our union has submitted scores of grievances on behalf of our members, many of which we've shared with this august body. I'll reiterate some of our concerns related to resolution number one about the budget. Yes, number one. The chronic lack of sufficient staffing, as witnessed by our management annually canceling millions of dollars approved by this body intended to hire employees. Decelerated DFAB internet connections where we can't get to our clients. Pritchard failure to maintain cleaning staff at University Avenue site. The private cleaning staff is down to one or two persons for two buildings and leaving the structures, especially the restrooms, filthy every single day. That's in the budget. Why is this company still being remunerated for their efforts? The scheme by the administration to build an eight-story building on our parking lot at University Avenue after we've moved in. So now we're going to have to park once you build that for your 22 courtrooms. We're going to have to walk across Market Street in the morning and at night, including the disabled and wheelchairs and walkers and scooters because you're putting an eight-story building on our parking lot after we moved in there. DFAB paid $15 million for that building. No, strike that. $22 million and $15 million to fix it up. The nepotism and favoritism practiced by our management to reward personal and political friends at the fiscal cost of the county by promoting employees in violation of our contract and civil service regulations. The pernicious presence of mice and other vermin within the buildings, including mouse droppings left to linger within the privately run cafeteria upon which not enough resources have been dedicated for remediation. Recyclables and garbage maintained within the buildings instead of outside, thus attracting mice and vermin. And we're concerned about legislative interference into the works of the executive body of this government. We have seen it, we've discussed it, and we're still not satisfied that it's going on. There should be a separation of power. That's what it does in this country. Federal, state, local level. You've got the legislative, executive, and the judicial branch. This branch should not be injecting itself into the workings, everyday workings, of the executive branch.
Thirty seconds.
So as a follow-up to our meeting with Mr. Richard, President Richardson on March 2nd, we wrote him on March 9th asking for a meeting with the Work First New Jersey Committee and the Labor Oversight Committee. We've yet to get a response, and we look forward to getting it because I noted that in my open request that fiscal 2019, '20, and '21, six of the committees I asked for reports from, none had met in any of those years. You've got to have oversight over the legislative body. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. And as always, you will be answered in writing.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Douglas. I am the president of the Public Employee Supervisors Union, which represents supervisory and managerial titles within the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, formerly known as welfare. When you authorize the budget, I ask that you consider monies for overtime to address the 7,000 to 10,000 cases which were not recertified for the month of April 2022. For those of you who didn't have an opportunity to look at social media, it's blasted all over social media. The clients were lined up and wrapped around the corner. We also ask that you consider the 7,000 to 10,000 constituents of the County of Essex who may have lost their job as a result of the pandemic or for whatever other reason. But whatever it is, they are certainly food insecure and will not eat for the month of April. Please recall the multiple grievances that we filed on behalf of our members, both CWA Local 1081 and Public Employee Supervisors Union, and we did copy the commissioners' board. We ask that the current administration within DFAB that they authorize overtime to process these cases immediately. Implement overtime, especially since DFAB knew about this well over a month ago. So it's not like it was something new. We were concerned. We did not have the human capacity to process the cases, nor did we have the technological capacity to process these cases. So we also ask that you consider that the Department of Human Services also allotted the County of Essex monies, CARES Act monies, to process cases for overtime. That did not happen. My hope is that we do make sure that these cases are processed timely, give our employees overtime to do so. We also ask that you ask our DFAB administration and hold them accountable. We hope that these statements that Mr. Weiner and myself will not lead to the mendacious menacing that usually occurs when we complain. We don't want our employees to be harassed or scapegoated for all that is going on administratively because there is lack of leadership in the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. We're very, very concerned. So we are looking forward to a collaborative leadership style, which is very much needed during these times. We need collaborative leadership. As you are aware, like I stated, the lines were wrapped around the building. The staff was inundated as a result of this situation, which could have been avoided proactively, and it could have been mitigated, but it didn't happen. If DFAB administration had a viable plan, we would not be in the position that we're in. Please help our members, help our community, your constituents, and our clients. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. And as always stated, your questions will be answered in writing.
Thank you.
Any one else who wants to speak, Madam Clerk? So let's move to ordinance on introduction and first reading. Do you have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Um, yes, Mr. President. We have two ordinances and one resolution, which is an added starter.
Okay, let's move to ordinance number one. Mr. Jackson, please explain the ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Our Director Finance, Mr. Mohammed, will address these items.
Uh, good evening. Hassan Mohammed, County Treasurer. Ordinance number one is to provide renovation to three bridges in the County of Essex for $5,172,537, and this is issue loans from the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, and we do not have to put down payment because it's financed by the loan. And this is much-needed emergency repairs to that bridges, these bridges, three bridges. Ordinance number two is to provide improvement to the county college, and this was approved by the Board of School estimate, and the amount is $3,537,176,8500 is financed by the county, and the rest will be Chapter 12, which is financed by the State of New Jersey. I'm here for any questions.
I don't have any questions on one or two.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Resolution.
So, so we should just take them individually?
Okay, Commissioners, do I have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance number one?
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pamares, Vice President?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance number two, which talks about... You'll have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance number two.
Motion.
Set.
Moved by Commissioner Ricardo, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Move to resolution number three. And we'll have a mover and a second. Resolution number three.
We did the first... We did the first... We discussed it on break.
Mr. Jackson, resolution number three.
Mr. Mohammed.
Uh, good evening, Hassan Mohammed, County Treasurer. Resolution number three is to amend the 2022 budget. As a part of the budget process, the State of New Jersey has to review our budget, and they send us, they require us to amend the budget. To change one of the grants has to be reduced, and this has to be advertised because it's more than 50% of one, 10% of the item, it has to be advertised. So the, this resolution to amend the 2022 budget, and it will be, the budget should be adopted in the following meeting, which is April 20th.
Thank you. Mr. Mohammed, just from procedurally, we have, we do have the county budget, adoption of the county budget listed later in the meeting. So we should move to adjourn that, open it, and move to adjourn that to the meeting of the 20th, correct?
Yes, it should be held the public hearing and not to vote on it. Just, I forgot to mention, this amendment did not change the tax levy or the tax rate or the amount of surplus anticipated. It's just, it's an amount in and out from revenues and appropriation. It did not affect any, any piece, any other issues in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this, this is, this amount was recognized in the revenue section of the, of the budget. It was recognized as a appropriation in the individual departments. The state is merely asking us to take it out of the departments, those amounts that equal the revenue amount, and put them in a separate section unclassified by department. So it's nothing more than just reclassifying appropriations that were in the individual department into a separate line item. So it's easier to track the money that's being charged there for the purposes for which the grant was given.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Resolution number three.
Wait, uh, what ordinance are you going to file?
Three.
Is that, was that deliberate to us? I don't have any...
It was, it's fairly new.
Does anybody have a comment?
This was new, just got... This just happened, this just took place.
Through you, Mr. President. This just happened, Commissioner, as a result of the feedback that we got from the state. So it was, it was on as a late starter.
Oh, okay. Can we, um, see if we're happy or help?
It's, it's... Somebody can help you.
Oh, it's not?
It's just introduction.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioners, do I have a motion and a second to introduce resolution number three?
Motion.
Second. Moved by Cooper, Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Johnson. Roll call.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing the purpose of...
Uh, Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do you have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading of public hearing?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. We have three.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to ordinance number O-2022-00004, and it will be read into the record at a later time.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I feel that we may be having a technical issue. I just want to make sure that we are in compliance with the audio. I'm sorry to interrupt, but seems like we're having, we are, just want to make sure that we're okay.
If everyone could just speak a little bit louder, please. We're not, not hearing that one.
It's a problem hearing, you president. Speaking into the mic.
Speak into the mic.
Closer, closer. I have trouble hearing you, President.
How's that?
Better.
I'm not sitting like that. I'm not doing it. I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance O-2022-00004 open. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment for or against this resolution, please come to the microphone and state your name and affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. There's no one appearing. Mr. McInerney, any questions, comments?
I have none.
Mr. Polavecchio?
No, no questions.
Commissioners? Commissioner Siebel?
Thank you. I'm delighted that we are naming the Anima Hospital after Barry Astraski. I've known him for such a long time, and he's done such wonderful work, especially at St. Barnabas, which is now called Cooperman Barnabas, and he's head of the St. Barnabas Health System, and he spends so much time helping us right here in Essex County. So I'm delighted that the Anima Hospital will be named in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Siebel. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll move it.
To close public hearing on ordinance O-2022-00004. I have a mover and Commissioner Siebel, and a second and Commissioner Ricardo. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Don't let the same to, same to approve.
Same to, to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we just need a roll call.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions, number R-2022-00248, and it will be read into the record at a later time. I hereby declare the public hearing on resolutions R-2022-00248 open. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment for or against this resolution, please come to the microphone and state your name and affiliations for the record. You have three minutes to speak. There's no one appearing. Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Do I have a motion and a second to close public hearing on resolutions R-2022-00248?
Mr. President, I'll move.
Moved by Vice President Pamares, second by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have the same mover and second to approve the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions R-2022-00249, which is the adoption of the 2022 Essex County budget. Mr. Polavecchio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Having heard from Mr. Mohammed and Mr. McInerney about the amendments required to the budget that came, were recommended by the state, I would recommend at this time that you open the public hearing on this resolution and then adjourn it to the meeting of April 20th. By that point, the other resolution will be in place, the amendments, and then we can move to adopt the budget at that time at the next meeting. So it would be, at this point, a motion to open the public, or open the public hearing, and then we'd have a motion to adjourn to the 20th.
I hereby declare the public hearing on resolutions R-2022-00249 open. And then take a motion to adjourn. Now I need a motion to adjourn this resolution until April 20th.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Mr. President, if I can, just to put a punctuation on that.
Mr. Polavecchio.
Thank you. And just to be clear, if there's any members of the public who are listening or watching or hear on this, the public hearing is still open and will be held at the meeting of April 20th, which will be in this room at 5:00. So there will still be time to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Polavecchio. Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions, number six, since resolutions one through five have been withdrawn by the administration, and we will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a 24-month extension option for triane aid investigative services for the county's adjuster's office. For those who are admitted to our hospital center, there is a process, an investigation that's conducted to provide that each of those residents or those persons admitted, our Essex County residents, this firm provides that service, and we are extending, requesting to extend that contract for another 24 months, and the amount now to receive $80,000.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
Is this the same firm that we use for a number of years, like on a consistent basis?
Yes, this, yes. Through you, Mr. President. This was, the original contract was three years for $120,000, and we've expended about $92,000 of that. But this will be a 24-month extension of the original period.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, do I have a mover and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Ricardo, second by Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number seven, which is from the Department of Corrections, and it will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Director Ortiz will handle this item.
Good evening. Alfaro Ortiz, Director, Essex County Correctional Facility. I'm here this evening to advance the following. Department of Corrections Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement, MOA, between the County of Essex and the County of Union for the provision of correctional services by Essex. This particular amendment includes original MOA approved on 5/12/21 for a five-year period from 7/1/21 to 6/30/26. Essex received an additional $950,000 for July 1st, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Includes specific information language not included in the original MOA. General liability insurance at $1 million per occurrence, $5 million as a general or aggregate amount, $5 million general law enforcement liability, Union County to maintain the same limits for processing and transporting of inmates.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
Yes, Director Ortiz, good evening. This is, like you said, a relatively new contract to 2021. Is this as a result of an increased number of Union County inmates, increased number per inmate, or for the daily charge, or combination of those things, or something else that caused this increase?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director. Yes, there is an increased amount of inmates, so they are projecting out, the numbers have increased significantly since the beginning of this particular contract. You are correct.
Okay, and does that, is, is that number, there's, if I recall, there's a, there's a daily cost per inmate, correct?
Correct.
Does that, did that increase, or is it just based on the overall numbers?
No, it's been 104 since inception and continues.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
And that 104 was based on the calculation, of course, and overhead?
Correct.
That hasn't gone up that much, or?
Not at this time, but we'll always negotiate.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? I need a mover and a second. Moved by Commissioner Graham, second by Vice President Pamares. Roll call.
Tell you later. See you later.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
We're gonna move to resolution number nine because eight has been withdrawn by the administration. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Director Michael Vier will handle this item.
Thank you, Commissioners. Michael Vier, Director of Special Transportation Services for the County of Essex. Today I'm representing the Division of Senior Services. This resolution is an interdepartmental, intergovernmental agreement between the Township of Montclair and the County of Essex for transportation services through a pilot project which we're using TNC services, transportation networking companies, which we all refer to as Ubers and Lifts. During COVID, the Township of Montclair ended up switching their shuttle buses to Uber and Lifts, very similar to what Essex County ended up using because we were doing one-on-one transportation. The seniors in Montclair loved the service, and Montclair had asked if the County of Essex would take over their transportation program and continue the TNC program. The state is watching this. It's, Montclair will become the first full town operating with Ubers and Lifts for their senior citizens. Very successful within the County of Essex. We're looking forward to be successful in Montclair also.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
How does this, how does this work? So somebody would just call up or does it go through a dispatch system?
So it's a little bit different than the Essex County's program. For Essex County, a senior citizen would call our transportation company, our third-party contractor. How we set this contract up is a company called Easy Ride actually provides our TNC service. Will also be providing the TNC service for Montclair. In Montclair, the seniors will actually directly call Montclair, and they will get transportation within minutes. So it's actually not even going through our system. We're just actually reconciling the numbers at the end of the month, paying the bill, and then billing Montclair.
And as far as liability insurance and things like that, what, this is, does this have any impact on the county?
Absolutely not.
And are the rates the same as Uber charges or their discount rate?
No, well, you know, it's, believe it or not, it's cheaper than the services that the County of Essex provides with our third-party contractor. Average trip in Montclair will cost about $16 a trip. Can't beat that.
So this is something new that could take heat in other municipalities?
Yeah, the state is actually watching to see how we're gonna do Montclair. We've been doing it for, this will be the third year that the County of Essex is doing it. New Jersey Transit actually gave us money for the pilot project three years ago. Actually offered it to the entire state, only Essex and Sussex ended up taking them up on it. Sussex, because there's not a lot of people with Ubers and Lifts, wasn't very successful. Essex County was very successful.
So it does depend on the volume of drivers around in that, in Uber?
Yes, and the problem is also getting drivers for shuttle buses. There is a shortage of CDL drivers nationwide, so this is a perfect answer to that problem also.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Cooper?
Now, with this service, if a senior was going to go shopping, food shopping or whatever, would that driver wait for her?
No.
Or will she have to, after she done got all her grocery stuff, have to call in again?
They have to call in again, yes. And the interesting part of this, unlike a regular Uber and Lyft like we take, you don't need, the senior does not need a smartphone. The company that they will call is Easy Ride directly, and Easy Ride will make that phone call for that senior. Stand the phone until actually the vehicle even arrives. Tell that senior that the color of the vehicle, the driver's name, and even the license plate. And then after that person is done shopping, they would actually make the call again, and the same process would happen.
Suppose some of them don't have a cell phone and they call from their house to get this ride. How would they get that return ride?
They probably would not be eligible, and at that point, those who are not eligible, or there are some people who can't take Ubers and Lifts, such as those in wheelchairs, the County of Essex would supplement that service, and we would take those people.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you. So do the senior have to pay for this service at all or is the city paying for it and then getting reimbursed?
The township has $123,200 that they've budgeted for the County of Essex, so the seniors do not have to pay for the service at all.
And do the seniors have an option, I guess they need to have a smartphone to track that the driver is taking them to the correct destination that they requested to go or come from?
No, there's no, there's no need for the senior to have a smartphone. Everything is going through the company Easy Ride, and Easy Ride will make the appointment for that senior. And on the return trip, the senior calls Easy Ride, and Easy Ride will call the Uber or Lyft company.
So is Easy Ride still will track, track the senior as they're in the vehicle going to their destination?
They can, yes. They have, they have the computerization to do all of that.
And we have already contracted with Easy Ride, the county?
We've contracted with Easy Ride for a number of years. The Easy Ride does our Job Access Reverse Commute Service. They also, and they've been doing that probably since 2002. And they also now have a contract with our third-party contractor to do the, it's called Ride for Life. That's the Uber and Lyft terminology. That's a program. We've been using them for three years in our special transportation program.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Vier, that's $16. That's a round trip?
No, that's per trip.
That's per trip?
That's per trip. Where the average, if you use the Essex County transportation system, you're talking $25 to $30 a trip.
Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just trying to wrap my head around this. So the, the service currently, how, this service to seniors is currently provided by the Township of Montclair or by the County of Essex? It's provided by, it was provided by the Township of Montclair. They used two and three shuttle buses prior to COVID. After COVID, as- I'm sorry, are those on-demand, so are those with, are those a set set of stops? Are those their on-demand shuttles that they're calling into the township? No, they were, they were pretty much shuttle. They had a, the Easy Ride actually had a route that they did in the town. They would take half of the town one day, half of the town the next day, and they would just pretty much do a circle of trips where if a person needed to go- Where do they go? They would mostly go to food shopping. Food shopping, and if a doctor's appointment was on the route, they would take a doctor's appointment. If the doctor's appointment was not on the route, they would probably call the County of Essex to take that person for them. Okay, so, so, and currently then that, so that was a driver that the Township of Montclair is paying? That's a Montclair shuttle? No, they contracted, they were very similar to what Essex County was doing. They were paying a third-party contractor. They were paying a third-party contractor to do that, okay. So that money that they were paying the third-party contractor, they're now gonna pay, they're now gonna pay the County of Essex? They're giving the County of Essex that $123,200, and we will be providing this pilot project with Ubers and Lifts. So the, and the pilot program is, is being provided through this New Jersey Transit? I guess the question I'm trying to get to is why wouldn't we just, why do we need the third-party contractor to do this? Why wouldn't we just contact Uber and Lyft and make this own arrangement ourselves and save some money? Say that again, I'm sorry. Why wouldn't we just go to Uber and Lyft directly? Why, what is, why do we have a third-party? Because there's computerization involved and staff time. This doesn't take any of our staff time at all with the number of people calling. You actually have to have a program installed to directly work with Uber and Lyft. We just don't have the manpower to do that, Commissioner. So I get, no, I guess my question is different. Wouldn't, we don't, so we're not dealing with Uber and Lyft directly, we're dealing with? We're dealing with the third-party, we're dealing with Easy Ride, yes. Right. And actually, we're not dealing, in this particular program, we're, the senior is not calling us and now we're not calling Easy Ride. They're actually calling Easy Ride directly. A little bit different from what we're doing in the County of Essex. Okay, so the senior's actually calling essentially a dispatch? Yeah, it's saving our, so there's no telephone backlog, so it's kind of bypassing the county system, going right to Easy Ride. But under the, under the, under the other system that we had in the township, we had essentially a shuttle system, which was people call, group of people get picked up at a certain time, they get driven to a certain place. They're there for a certain amount of time. They know that the ride will be there when they're done and it will be driven back to, to, so this is, this is, you keep saying a rideshare, right? I think we understand the concept of a rideshare is one person calls and the rideshare shows up and it takes you where you want to go, and then you gotta call somebody else for the rideshare to come back, pick you up, and then bring you back. That's exactly what's gonna happen in Montclair. The problem with the shuttle, when they had the shuttle bus pre-COVID, was the apartment buildings, the senior apartment buildings got that serviced. It was those individual homes that really were not on the route. And those were the people who were kind of missing their, not missing their doctor's appointment, but the county was subsidizing those services. So with this TNC, Uber, and Lyft service, now the entire senior population is pretty much equal. But the, the return trip, I'm still trying to wrap it, how do they get back? Oh, they just make the phone call again to Easy Ride and say, hi, I'm Mrs. Jones. I'm ready to be picked up. They already have her in the computer. Assuming, as Commissioner Johnson, assuming Ms. Jones has a- Well, if Ms. Jones didn't have a telephone, she wouldn't have gotten to the destination in the first place. Can't you call the switchboard through your home phone? Yeah, but, no, they will be, they will, they will be given the directions. Do you have a cell phone? You don't have to have a smartphone, you have to have a cell phone. So when the senior calls, they're asked, you do have a cell phone? And if a person doesn't have a cell phone, then it will be referred to the County of Essex, and then we'll take that person. Then he'll take it from? Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Are there limits on where the destinations that these seniors can go to or is it open?
It's not opened for Montclair. We, in the intergovernmental agreement, we have a 10-mile radius. So that's pretty much the bordering communities of Montclair. In the County of Essex, we kind of decide whether or not we can take somebody up to Bergen County or not. So with our system, we really don't have a, we have the discretion to go into Bergen County or further. Montclair, we're just kind of doing the continuous counties around them. And that's, and we didn't, that's how it was with Montclair. We didn't, we didn't tell Montclair that. Montclair told us that.
So you're limited it to a 10-mile radius?
10-mile radius, yes.
What is the normal number that residents can call to use your services? I get asked that question all the time and always have to look it up.
My, the Essex County Community Transportation Program is 973-737-7200.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Mr. Vier, before this rideshare that we're doing now, how many, approximately how many seniors use the shuttles? And if you would estimate or guess at it, how many were missing out in terms of homeowners who were not at the senior buildings? What numbers are we talking about?
Are you talking pre-COVID or during COVID? Because during COVID, we ended up going to a one-on-one transportation program because we didn't want to put, and I'm talking, I'm talking the county system. We did not want to put multiple seniors on our vehicles. Be exact, a COVID contagious person in Bergen County ended up contaminating the entire system in Bergen County. Every single driver almost got COVID and shut that down. Once I learned that, what we ended up doing was we went to a one-on-one system, and I'm happy to say in the two years, not one of our drivers ended up with COVID. So what we ended up doing was we needed the Ride for Life service to supplement our vehicles because we were going one-on-one. Yes, we did lose passengers during COVID because we were not transporting nutrition sites or developmentally disabled workshops. However, anybody who needed to go to a doctor, a dialysis, chemotherapy, we ended up taking them throughout the two years, and we're still doing that today. Nutrition is starting to pick up, so we are gonna start seeing our numbers grow again. Prior to us having the Ride for Life program, yes, we were, there was some waiting lists. There was some services that we could not do on Saturdays. With our TNC, which will be hopefully approved at the next meeting through New Jersey Transit, it's very difficult to say no to somebody because we have access to a ride for those people.
So what were the pre-COVID numbers?
The pre-COVID numbers, we were, the County of Essex was probably doing about 125,000 trips a year, and that takes into account everything. We don't say no to anybody. If a person has to take their pet to the vet and we can fit them on our vehicle, we will do that. We don't, we, we're open to anything.
And so what's the dollar amount in this program?
So it's, it's, the dollar amount is a little bit different because our contract with our third-party contractor is $63.67 an hour. But that, that $63.67 an hour, that takes into account the salaries for the drivers, the salaries for the dispatchers, the salaries for the maintenance mechanic. It's inclusive of everything, maintenance of the vehicle, insurance of the vehicle. So that, that, that dollar amount is very difficult to break down of how much each person's getting. It's a whole. The only thing the third-party contractor does not provide is the vehicles, because the County of Essex provides the vehicles, and fuel. The third-party contractor provides everything else, including training for the drivers.
Commissioner Cooper, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. So how much is our annual contract with this third-party vendor?
I believe it's close to $4 million?
Each year?
Each year.
And we provide the buses and we provide the fuel?
Yes, and they provide 40 drivers and maintenance mechanics. They, they provide the maintenance on the vehicles. They provide the insurance for their 45 vehicles.
So they upkeep and maintain the vehicles?
And do everything, yes.
So we give them the vehicles, we give them the fuel, and they have to do everything else to run the operations?
Correct.
Countywide?
Countywide.
And they also maintain the dispatch system when folks call in for rides?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here we are. Need a motion and a second.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
President, not a word.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll move to resolutions 10 through 17, which are from the Department of Parks, and they will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zage will handle these items, Mr. President.
Joshua Zage, Essex County Parks. Good evening.
Mr. Zage, before you get started, when, when, when will the commissioners see, see their pictures up on these billboards in the park?
I, I reached out to the Parks Director after our conversation previously, and he said he will check with the administration once again.
Okay. Hopefully you have a more clear answer on the 20th, if you have anything on it.
I hope so. Number 10 is a contract award with American Wood Carving to provide the design and fabrication of custom illuminated signs. 24-month contract not to exceed $350,000. These are for light-up signs that we're gonna put up in front of new buildings or when buildings are rehabbed. We don't currently have any in the park system, but there is one outside of the OEM building over by the Cody Arena, and they'll look just like those. Number 11 is a contract award with GSP Properties, the lowest responsive bidder to provide masonry work, amount not to exceed $672,615. Simply, this is for sidewalk repairs, pavers, foundations, bench installations, storm drains throughout the entire park system, and golf courses. Number 12 is a contract award with Store Tractor Company for the purchase of Toro Groundmaster Tri-Fex mowers and accessories under the Middlesex Regional Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, amount not to exceed $696,328.56. Specifically, this is for a total of 12 of these mowers. There's gonna be four over at each of our golf courses. The current motors have outlived their useful life. These mowers cut greens, tees, aprons, and again, each course has four that will be replaced. The mowers that they're replacing are eight years old and are used on a daily basis for the growing season. Number 13 is a contract award with Business Tech Partners to provide a point-of-sale system for the Richard J. Cody Arena. 36-month contract not to exceed $307,420. This is for the point-of-sale system over at the arena. This is for the point-of-sale system over at the arena. Uh, it includes online, uh, reservations for coaches and students as well as, uh, uh, patrons could purchase ice time, uh, during the free skate as well as, uh, they can reserve their skates. Uh, this is a system we haven't had specifically for the Cody Arena in the past. Uh, in the past, we've had all of our revenue generating systems, uh, all of our revenue generating facilities together on one system. But, uh, Cody Arena presents some unique challenges with their ice time. So, uh, we, uh, are now having them have a separate POS system. Numbers 14 through 17 all deal with, uh, vehicles that the, uh, Parks Department is looking to purchase. Uh, 14 is, uh, to provide five new 2022 Ford F- Ford 20 trucks with Western plow equipment not to exceed $356,055. Number 15, contract award to DFF LM to provide three new 2020 Ford F-250 Supercab trucks with plow equipment not to exceed $135,825. Number 16, contract award, uh, with, uh, DFF LM to provide two new 2020 Ford T-50 Transit Low Cargo Vans. Amount not to exceed $65,983. And finally, number 17 is a contract award with Winter Ford to provide one new 2022 Ford Transit Connect van with rear symmetrical doors, amount not to exceed $31,786. Uh, just to specifically, uh, inform the board as to where these vehicles are going. Uh, the, the Ford, number 14, the Ford F-450 plows. One's going to Hendrix, one to Burn, one to the Zoo, two to Branch Brook Park. Number 15, the Ford 250 trucks with plows, one's going to Independence Park, one to South Mountain Reservation and one to Branch Brook Park. Number 16, the Ford Transit vans, both of those are going to Branch Brook Park. And finally, number 17, the, the Ford Transit Connect is going to the Zoo. Uh, these totally will be, uh, three replacement vehicles and, uh, eight new ones that we'll be adding to our fleet. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Mr. Polavecchio?
Yes, uh, Mr. President. Hello, Mr. Zaitz. Uh, a couple of questions. Number 10 with the signs, the illuminated signs. Uh, do you have buildings or locations where these will be going? Uh, you have designated spots for them and are they replacing existing signs that are already in place?
Uh, three, Mr. President, Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Uh, we're still determining where to, uh, where to place them. Are, are we envisioning them going, uh, in spots where we, where they, the wooden signs that you see around the park system just aren't feasible? As well as, uh, putting them, you know, if we have a new building, um, you know, the wooden sign might not look as nice as an illuminating sign, that kind of thing.
I, I think you hit the point of my question. They're not replacing those nice kind of moving gold wood signs?
No, no, certainly not.
Okay, all right. Uh, other question, on the vehicles, the 14 through 17. You said that three were replacements and eight were, uh, new additions to the fleet. Was there, uh, what's the reason for the additions?
Uh, it, it's really just, um, the, the day-to-day use of the, of the park system and the cleanup and then the plowing. Um, we need new, new vehicles in order to meet the demand of the public.
Okay, are we, okay. Yes, my question is, was there, uh, an outside vendor or some other, some outside vendor providing these vehicles through other services? Or we just have an increased demand?
No, it's, it's really, through you, Mr. President, it's really just an increased demand.
Thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
With regard to illuminated signs, this is a contract not to exceed, so these are custom signs. Each sign has been, I'm assuming has been, uh, priced out against one aspect of the design. And then is there a quote given as to how much that sign will cost? Is there a budget as to how much you'll spend on a sign?
Uh, sure. Uh, three, Mr. President, uh, Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Uh, we do have a specific line item, so, uh, the design of the sign would be $60 an hour. The fabrication would be $95 an hour and then the installation would be $110, uh, dollars an hour. Um, and we would be provided with a quote to see what the, the total price would be before the installation. That is correct, yes.
And then all these other contracts that I'm looking at here, for the most part, on the equipment are the lowest responsible or the sole responsible business?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you. Um, on Resolution Number 10, are the signs, you envision that the signs will look like the, um, the signage that's outside of 50 South Clinton in East Orange?
Uh, three, through you, Mr. President, Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. I'm not, I can't say I'm not really familiar with the sign. The only, the only sign I could think of, um, that I've personally driven past recently would be the OEM sign over at Cody Arena. I don't know how familiar, uh, you would, you would be with that one.
See, that one has words, so it's like, you know, uh, illuminated signage with words and sometimes the county's that faces up there and other pictures sometimes. So a basic sign?
Well, I, I believe you're thinking of, um, an electronic sign, uh, that we would have outside of the arena or outside of the Hall Records, actually, we have an electronic sign. It won't be like that. This is a, a more decorative sign. You can't, you can't flash messages like, you know, Tina's birthday parties on Tuesday. It's not like that. It's, it's more of a permanent fixture, um, that would say, for instance, the name of the building or the name of the exhibit. It'd be more like that.
Because my second question was going to be, it's going to be like advertisement, but you just answered the question. I have another question for Resolution, um.
Do we know where that statue is coming from? I think it's you, Mr. Zaitz, because we don't have our pictures up on any billboard.
Some kind of, uh, button that makes it, uh, sound like that?
I, uh, for item number 13, Resolution, um.
Commissioner Cooper's please speaking into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't really have a big mouth, so I thought you were picking it up. Um, for item number 13, it referenced that you got responses from six vendors, but only three were listed. Did you reject the other three? Or am I misreading?
Uh, three, Mr. President, Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. I believe, I believe, let me just double check. It was evaluated since it was a competitive contract? Uh, I, I apologize, I'm going to have to default to, uh, Mr. Cultry over purchasing.
Julius Cultry, uh, purchasing agent on our decision memo, there's only three vendors. Yes. I'll have to get back to you, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
Um, that's it. We, um, after we're done, can we keep Mr. Jake Yates there? I have two questions about something not related to the resolution.
Absolutely. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a motion and a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
This is to take Resolutions 10 through 17, just for the record.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 18 through 22. Ah, and 20 was withdrawn. You want to talk to him now? No, don't leave. Commissioner wants to speak with you. How about that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Antonio will handle the next.
Mr. 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 Jackson.
Good evening. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 18 is a contract award to Umsom Engineering to perform the construction engineering and inspection services required to undertake the construction of the Irvington Avenue Streetscape Phase Two roadway improvements. Umsom's proposal was rated as a high scoring of the 11 responses to this project's RFP. This contract will not exceed $158,800 nor will it exceed 12 months in duration. Item number 19 is a change order adding an amount not to exceed $17,364 to cover the cost of unforeseen additional engineering services associated with the replacement of the Lakeside Avenue culvert over the Wickham Brook in West Orange. This change order will yield a 7.93% change to the original contract awarded to McDonald's. And item number 21 is a contract award to AA Berms, the lowest of the two bids received, to construct the Irvington Avenue Streetscape Phase Two improvements. This project will extend the already constructed Streetscape improvements along Irvington Avenue from Hillcrest Road in Maplewood to Florence Avenue in Irvington. This contract will not exceed $878,718 and it will not exceed 210 calendar days. Mr. Juan Alvarado of AA Berms has joined us and he would like to introduce his company and answer any questions the board may have.
Please, let's get him up here.
Hello. Uh, my name's Juan Alvarado. I'm the owner of AA Berms. We're a small firm headquartered in Belleville, Essex County. And, uh, we have, uh, a lot of experience, seven years' experience now in sidewalk work, decorative concrete, a lot of parks and streetscape projects. And, um, we were, uh, responsible for the first phase where we were fortunate enough to hire other Essex County, um, subcontractors to perform various work along Irvington Avenue. And, um, if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer.
Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
No questions for me.
Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? So how, how many, um, do, do you employ any Essex County residents?
Uh, yes, uh, I would say 80% of our force is from Essex County, particularly Newark.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
And we're taking this one independently?
Which one? I didn't know. 20 is withdrawn.
Okay.
You skipped 20. This is for Resolutions 18 through 22, except.
We, I don't know, we did 22. 22 is separate.
21.
I'm sorry. Okay, 21 and 20 was withdrawn. Johnson and Cooper, right. Roll call, Madam.
And, uh, Mr. President, it was Johnson and Cooper?
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson? Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Mr. President, Julius Cultry, uh, purchasing agent. The answer to, um, competitive contract 21-296, that was a typo that, based on technology, I'm looking at the tabulations, there were only three vendors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I defer to Mike.
So next item is, uh, 22 on the agenda and Mr. Polavecchio?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. This is an item that, uh, comes up around budget time every year and I've sent out a memo to, uh, to brief you on it. But essentially, the, uh, this is to certify compliance with the United States EEOC's enforcement guidance on, uh, and they're, they have guidance, it's not a law, but guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction, conviction records in the county's employment decisions. So, uh, we've reviewed that and actually it's, there's no changes last, uh, since last year or probably the year before. But what, what it does, what the memo will do, if you want to read that, is it gives you, um, irrelevant county hiring practices pertaining to an individual's criminal history and, um, all the things that the county does regarding law enforcement and non-law enforcement. And, uh, it is my opinion that, uh, the county's practices do comply with that EEOC guidance. So, uh, I just wanted you to be comfortable with this before you do certify, uh, through the resolution that, uh, the county is in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Polavecchio. Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a mover and a second.
I'll move, Mr. President.
Moved by VP Pamares, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Uh, Mr. President, I was talking, I didn't get the mover.
Oh, moved by Vice President Pamares, second by Commissioner Graham.
Thank you. Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 23 through 38, which are all commendations and memoriam proclamation resolutions and they will be read into the record at a later time. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Mercado, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 39, which will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. Uh, Director Lordo will address this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Maya Lordo, Health Officer for Essex County. Item 39, Department of Health and Rehabilitation, Division of Community Health Shared Services Agreement between the County of Essex and the Township of Nutley Sharing an Ambulance for Hazmat. Um, I come before you as the links agency here for the county. Uh, we, we are the, also the Hazmat Enforcement Agency for the county. Uh, and Hazmat is coordinated through the department, through the fire department at, and through Nutley through a contract agreement. So therefore, uh, due to that, there is an ambulance that was purchased that is equipped, equipped to handle hazmat response and also is able to be used for other clinics and also to be used for vaccination or testing for COVID, so it's dual uses.
Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
So is, is pursuant to the contract, the ambulance, uh, the charges to the contractor only when the ambulance is used for hazmat purposes?
So I, so when it comes to the ambulance use, uh, it, the vehicle will be given over to Nutley Hazmat and when the county needs to use it, we can at any time. But it is being used for hazmat, uh, responses when they are called. And that is throughout every municipality of the county uses that ambulance and hazmat through Nutley.
Okay, so, so it is, so there is a specific charge, I would think, right? I mean, is it not to exceed, but?
I believe, uh, I'm going to refer to our purchasing director.
Julie, uh, Mr. President Julius Cultry, uh, this vehicle is purchased through CARES for $265,000 and the need for the, it's a combination need also that it will respond to health emergencies that the Health Department has along with hazardous materials, um, throughout the county.
But it's, but it's, it's used for multiple purposes, but this contract only deals with one specific use, correct?
Multiple uses. One is hazardous material, the second one is the need for the county Health Department.
So that's within this contract?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I would like to, uh, put in a comment because I would like all of our, my colleagues to recognize that this young lady here was the one who ran the COVID-19 testing and all of those. of those for all of the facilities, and I think that with her being here, I think we should give her a round of applause.
Thank you, Commissioners, much appreciated.
Didn't realize you were going to be last. Had I realized that, I would have moved you to the top of the list.
It's perfectly fine.
Mr. President, she wasn't last, she's next to last, but you still would have moved her to the top, right?
Okay. Commissioners Siebel?
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson took the words right out of my mouth, because I was prepared to say almost the same thing, because for two and a half years, you have extended so much of your time and energy to help Essex County, and you truly helped us get through this horrible situation with the pandemic. So we all applauded you, but I think you did a fantastic job giving your time and energy. What will we do without you? We were very fortunate that you came to work for Essex County. Thank you so much.
Thank you to all as well.
Vice President Pumares?
Thank you, and I have the pleasure of reminding my fellow colleagues that she came by way of Bloomfield, so...
Oh, wow.
Forget to remind you all. And I really wanted to comment, of course, I'm in agreement with what has already been said, and I've seen it firsthand, but I did have the opportunity to see the ambulance, and I am a bit of a gearhead, and I did, of course, was gravitated to the fact that it was a very well-equipped vehicle, but it was very clear to me that the way that it was equipped really did meet the variety and diverse needs that you articulated earlier. So I want to commend you on the selection of the vehicle and how it can be used in a variety of ways, and I think that's going to be great for all of us. I know that Nutley in particular has had a long history of working in that capacity with hazmat and such, and so I've seen it throughout the years, you know, I've seen them in action and in our parades too, so they certainly have been very well-known. So I want to commend them for the selection of the vehicle, which is going to meet a new and special need. Thank you, Mr. President.
I too want to commend you for all the hard work. There were a lot of other people who were out front, in front of the cameras, who got a lot of the credit, and people need to know that you are really the engine behind the whole thing, so...
Thank you. Couldn't have done it without you.
We really appreciate you.
Mr. President, Julius Cultri, Purchasing Agent. Also, this vehicle will be titled to the Township of Nutley because of the response for ambulances within the Health Department, the policies and procedures, that has to be done. So this vehicle will be transferred to them via their title.
Thank you. Do I have a mover and a second?
I'll move it.
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Siebel, second by Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution forty, and we will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Treasurer Mohamed will handle these two items.
Good evening, Hassan Mohamed, County Treasurer. This resolution to extend the temporary budget for two months, the reason of this, the original temporary budget was for the first three months of the year, and because the budget was not adopted for this meeting, so this resolution is required to keep the county funded for the next, until the budget gets adopted. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney? So more than likely, we may have a budget adopted prior...
Yes, before that.
Yeah, before this, but just in case.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I need a mover and a second.
Motion.
Moved by Commissioner Cooper, second by Commissioner Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to reported board committees. Do we have any...
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 before we go there, we'll get Mr. Yates back up here. Did you get that information I asked you for?
Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. I've been told that my picture will now be on the billboards.
Mr. Yates, um, okay, so I'll start with my easiest question first. Do we go out to bid for concessions throughout the county parks?
Through you, Mr. President, yes, we do. Do you have a specific park in mind?
Yes, so I've been contacted by a couple of folks from South Orange and other towns within Essex County that goes to the, I'm reading this specific part, the South Mountain Dog Park, and they would like to know, can you add concessions there for them? I guess they're looking that if we could allow for a vendor during the winter months to sell coffee or hot beverages, and maybe during the summer, water, you know, small drinks, because apparently they go there for hours at a time with their dogs, and would like to know if we could take that into consideration?
Joshua, through you, Mr. President, Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. Those are biddable items, so I can certainly take it back to the Parks Director, and we would have to put out, if he sees that as a viable option, we would have to bid that out. Historically, with our ice cream trucks that go through Branch Brook or Brookdale, those are all biddable, so I would envision this would be something similar to that.
All right, perfect, thank you. I will take that back to constituents, and it needs to go out to bid, but you're taking it under advisement. Next question, what is the status of the repairs for the missing fence in Orange Park? About two or three years ago, we discussed that the administration had gone out to bid for a contractor to replace fencing at a couple of different parks throughout the county system. The fencing at Orange Park has not been addressed yet, so I would like to know what is the timeline for when that fence will finally be repaired? And then the same question related to Orange Park. About two years ago, we told constituents that we were going to do a survey to determine the condition and health of various trees within Orange Park, because whenever there's storms, high winds, Orange Park always has a significant number of trees that break off that fall down. Just two weeks ago, with high wind, same thing. And because of the health of some of those trees, a lot of the fencing there, the sections is getting damaged, and you know that's some old fencing. So I would like to know, to be able to report back to constituents that are asking for a status update of those two things.
Through you, Mr. President, Joshua Yates. I do not have the answer to either of those offhand, but I will, I will certainly check with the Parks Director and his staff, and we'll get back to the administration with an answer.
Last two things for Orange Park, the complaint has been, can you guys adjust the time that those lights that are out on the park, that they, you know, go on, come off, because they are super bright, I've gone past there at night to observe them? And then I know that we were making a lot of upgrades to that park, maybe someone stole it, but there used to be signage up that talked about the hours that the bathroom facilities were open, and that signage is no longer there.
Joshua Yates, again, I will certainly report back to the Parks Director, and we'll get you some answers.
All right, thank you.
See, if you had the Commissioner's picture up there, they wouldn't have taken the sign.
Mr. President, you're saying you want your picture by the bathrooms, is that it?
You have a great evening.
You too. Good evening.
Mr. President, Julius Cultri, Purchasing Agent. One of the problems we have are vendors, we have a bid for ice cream trucks that went out. We received no bids from anyone county lot. We then, now it's out again for vendors to be at the three parks, which are Branch Brook Park, Weekwake Park, and Brookdale Park. Again, hopefully, we get a vendor who would like to participate. So we do have bids out there for various concessions, and it's very difficult finding vendors.
Thank you. Okay, you're at the report. Don't get any slack.
Thank you, everyone. Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees? Commissioner Mercado?
Mr. President, a meeting of the Public Safety Ice Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, March 29th, to discuss the details regarding the SS County funds that were allocated for the legal defense of the ICE detainees being held at the SS County Correction Facility between 2019 and 2021. Before I begin, let me just thank the administration, Robert Jackson, Chief Olajo, Director Ortiz, and Warda Cirillo for their participation in that meeting. And I also want to recognize and thank my committee colleagues, Commissioner Vice President Pumares and Commissioner Johnson, for their continued support on that committee. Some of the topics that we discussed, we did a very brief recap of the events regarding the county's decision to provide for the legal funding of the ICE detainees, as well as the subsequent decision in 2021 to discontinue holding the detainees. Also discussed of the amount that the county funded for each of the legal service providers and the timelines for the provisions. Seton Hall Law School, Rutgers School of Law, and Legal Services of New Jersey, where each received $625,000 between 2019 and 2021. Subsequent to that, we authorized, or modified, we authorized modification of that so that they can spend down that money to service legal representation. Representatives from each of the providers gave specific clients that they represented and current statuses regarding their immigration cases. In fact, the uniform workers did mention some positive of eight clients being released as a result of their interventions and several clients being diverted. Each provider gave an update to the county on the funds they received, and so far, Seton Hall had balanced a $51,522 as of February 2022. Rutgers School of Law was awaiting the county $75,000 fund extensions, which they will receive sometime this month. Legal Service has spent down all of their funds by December 2021. Legal Services also, they also provided a brief summary of the challenges that they faced while representing clients during this period of time, including reaching their clients out of state and attending virtual legal hearings. At this time, due to the county's decision to discontinue holding ICE detainees at the SS County Correction Facility, there's no timetable follow-up on the following issues. I would like, once all the, each of the agencies have completed the program that they provide, a written comprehensive report with some demographic data and, you know, just some information about how that program went, what went well, what didn't, and what recommendations they may have in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado, for that report. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to give a report on the TNR Committee. We held a meeting on March 22nd to go over the activities that took place last year in 2021. We allocated, the board approved $50,000 for that activity. We spent roughly about $22,000 from the various entities that brought in feral cats down to the New York Humane Society. Our takeaway from that meeting was that my next meeting will be held June of this year, and we're looking to host a train-to-trainer for sometime in the month of July or August. And Mr. Jackson, I want to thank you and your staff for attending that meeting and for coming up with a great recommendation to perhaps come up with some kind of incentives to encourage other people to come in, to bring stray cats in, so that we can impact that population more. My goal is to have us spend 100% of the $50,000 that we allocated this year, so that we're not leaving any money on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Do we have any legislative report?
Mr. President.
Commissioner?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. President. Just to come back to the committee report, so first of all, Commissioner Cooper, thank you for that update and for your work on this, on that, on that issue, for sure, and thank the administration. Just wanted to comment on, Commissioner Mercado, thank you for that update, the, the program that the county agreed to create for pro bono representation for our ICE detainees is something that I'm particularly proud to have seen have started here, was particularly proud during the time that I had the opportunity and support of this, or to serve in the leadership position that each and every one of you supported me on that initiative. Thank you, Commissioner Mercado, for continuing that, and thank to the administration for doing that. You know, when the request was first made, you know, we were told that we were going to fund it at $100,000, and we were, and we were able to get that number up, which I, which I appreciate, to a significant amount, and there is no program, I don't know, anywhere else that existed, regardless of where you, where you fell on whether we should have had this contract or not. We are, I think, the only county that initiated a program with those providers. So I'm looking forward to seeing the actual, and I apologize if I'm not able to participate in the, in the meeting, but I'm looking forward to seeing the actual, a report back from Rutgers and Seton Hall and the providers that, that did that work, and also to have a conversation around, you know, potentially similar programs, not just for our, potentially for our ICE detainees, but for those who we, you know, currently have within our criminal justice system here at the county. Thank you, Mr. President.
Agreed. Ditto. Are there any legislative reports? Written communications? Unfinished business? Any new business? In that case, Madam Clerk, let's go to public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on any matter, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and affiliation for the record. You will have three minutes to speak.
Okay, good evening again. My name is Lisa Maddox Douglas. I am the Public Employees Supervisors Union President. We represent supervisory and managerial employees within the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. It was so great to hear the county and how they plan to comply with the United States Equal Opportunity Commission regarding the enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decision under the Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. I stand before you because DFAB administration was not adequately prepared to address the influx of clients which hit our doors on April 1st, 2022. As a result of not having a plan to not only address the 7,000 recertifications, but we also had online applications which may have included senior citizens and those who are applying for benefits immediately after their release from prison. As you are aware, the city of Newark has the highest per capita number, numbers of parolees than any other city within the state of New Jersey. In early March 2022, another 852 inmates were released, and no doubt, a large percentage have or plan to land at 320-321 University Avenue, DFAB. Commissioners, we ask that you inquire about the monies that was requested by DFAB and received from the federal government for overtime to process cases. We also ask that you inquire about the technological devices which were purchased as supposed to assist employees who worked from home during the pandemic. Finally, we ask that you encourage DFAB administration to not simply cherry pick those who will process cases during overtime, but to also ensure that all hands are on deck to ensure that these cases are processed. We also encourage you to implore them to implement a plan which would include the overtime, and make sure that we have the services for not only these individuals who were, did not receive the benefits on the first of the month, but also those who have been released from prison, who do not want to go back to a life of crime and desire to be reintegrated into society and require our services. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Have a great evening.
Thank you, and as is our practice, it will be, your questions will be answered and written.
Thanks.
David Weiner, also known as David Downer. Frank, how's the back? Good to see you. On both Monday and Tuesday, there were lines of clients on University Avenue, from University and Branford, all the way up to MLK Boulevard. Avenue, from University and Branford, all the way up to MLK Boulevard, out in the cold and the damp. The elderly, children were standing in line because 7,000 food stamp cases, recertifications, these are people that were on food stamps, they had to do a recertification. They got a messed up letter from the state, and our telephone system, when we call them, shows up as spam, so they don't answer their phones. So 7,000 people have been cut off, and all we're handing them is flyers to go to the food banks for their, for their satisfaction. Were it not for the activist Donna Jackson, who I've known for years, live streaming it, we would not have gotten those people into the building and safely and warm. In addition, our agency has been proclaimed by the state of New Jersey as the highest percentage of overdue clients' applications. I just talked about clients that were on the system, these are applications. In January of 2021, we had 78,631 overdue applications, 67,000 family care cases, 9,000 Medicaid cases, 7,000 food stamp cases. These 78,000 applications went unfulfilled as a result of residents being denied services they dearly need. We reiterate our request that we meet with the above-sided committees, above-sided that we had mentioned earlier, about the problems that exist within the Division of Welfare. I'll use that term. So, because the neediest residents of our county are not getting the services that they need. If we wonder why there's disruptions in the community, it's because there's no resources in the community because of malfeasance and misfeasance. We would say to you that there are hundreds of, due to hundreds of years of discrimination, all of these problems are falling mostly in this county upon people of color, black and brown. It's unacceptable, it's got to stop. Again, I ask that the Welfare Work Committee and the Labor Committee meet with us and go over, and the management, and go over these issues so that we can make things right for the people that have been so adversely affected through this COVID and beyond. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Again, your questions will be answered in writing. Commissioner? Any comments? Commissioner Mercado.
Mr. President, this is the first in-person meeting that we have. Thank you for your leadership. For these past two years, it's been a challenge. I just want to publicly thank the Clerk's Office, Madam Clerk Deborah Davis Ford, Deputy Clerk Deborah Markell, the whole gang, Kathy, and Public Information Officer, Chal, and the rest of the staff, our counsel, Michael Paulo Vecchio, and Frank, for their commitment and all the work that they've done to help us do what we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mercado, Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you and the staff as well for a smooth transition back to our very first meeting. It feels like we never left. So I want to thank you all for your support, and thank the administration. It was a really nice meeting, you know, a little bit nervous knowing we hadn't done this in a long time, but I thank you for all that and working out the kinks. It's good to be back.
Thank you. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes, just want to give a shout-out to our Department of Recreation. For those that are here, and those that are viewing, the Cherry Blossom Festival is going on right now. We had a kickoff last Tuesday, and it continues this Saturday and Sunday with Blossom Fest on Sunday, so please come out, enjoy the cherry blossoms, and I want to thank the Director, Dan Salvante, and Kate, and all the staff who've put a lot of work into keeping our parks the way they are. It's a really nice festival. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments? Herein now, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As have.